All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the August 27th, 2020 meeting of the Allen County Public Library Board of Trustees. We'll begin the meeting with a roll call. Present in the room is Jim Williams, Gloria Shaminoff, Paul Moss, and myself. Present via Zoom is Ben Eisbart.
Present.
And Marty Seifert.
Present.
Sharon, are you able to voice your presence? All right, well, we'll continue on and we'll ask if Sharon's here as we move forward. Are you seeing her on the... Nope, okay. So we'll move on to that. All right, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to accept?
Go ahead.
Go move.
Motion by Gloria, and we have a second by Paul in the room. Any changes or additions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, agenda's adopted. All right, moving on to approval of minutes. The minutes were sent out in the board packet for review for the regular session July 23rd, the approval of claims August 11th, the executive session August 13th, and the special session August 13th. Is there a motion for approval of those minutes?
This is Marty.
Still moved.
Second, Ben.
All right, we have a motion from Marty and a second from Ben. Are there any additions, clarifications for minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward with the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, finance report, Dave.
Thank you, Kent. In your packet are the financial reports, and they're a little light this time. As I noted in the treasurer's report, the written report, as I've mentioned before, we're converting to our new general ledger system, and we are still in the process of what's called mapping the old system to the new. Fundware has been around since 94, so there's a lot of mapping that needs to take more saying what the old account is to the new in order to bring balances over. So while your packet contains the revenue and expense reports, the balance sheet report is not there, but we met today on that, and we should do that.
David, excuse me, can you get closer to a microphone? It's hard for us to hear.
Sorry. How's that? Any better?
Better.
Okay. So as I was saying, hopefully within the next week, we will have the balance sheet items moved over, and at that point, we'll have the complete reporting package back to you off of the new system. But right now, the revenue and expense side is done well. No new lines are going into a budget challenge there. In fact, as you can tell from the graphs, we're still low on spending because of the closure for those weeks, and so we're ramping up spending. In fact, as you know, the capital side, we, you know, I included in your report, the capital report, a number of the projects that were in that bond issue request are now in the current, you know, or in the process of being either bid or have been bid, and they'll be done, you know, hopefully by the end of the year. As far as other items, the CAFR, I put it in front of you, we didn't have it done at the end of last month's meeting, but about three days later, it was finished, and you have your 2019 one, as well as it is on the website, you know, for ability for folks to look at it. Hopefully, we've got that submitted to GFOA, and hopefully, it'll be another year where we win the award on that. So keep our fingers crossed. Budget items, I just want to mention a few things that happened last Thursday. I believe we had met with county council, just giving their, the non-binding report that we give them and talking about our budget and initiatives. And then about two hours later, I met with the Department of Local Government Finance, who they reviewed our budget and signed off on it. Obviously, it's not completed yet. They were looking at the official numbers and what we would take in October. And as a reminder, we're moving that budget process to October this year. I included in your packet a calendar also of the new dates on that. The thing, the one that's coming up soon will be the F and P meeting. I know I got to get with Sarah and get something set up in September on that. We're trying to get enough information there. We could talk about not only the budget, but by that time, we'll have some of the compensation and benefit package information also for that meeting. DLG, like I said, DLGF felt fine with us. We're still going to wait for official numbers coming on September 15th on final revenue estimates from them, and then I'll adjust the official budget accordingly, and then what our internal budget would be to take into account cap losses and, in that matter, you know, a contingency for revenues that might be affected next year, might be probably will be affected next year, like income tax revenues because of the economic situation now. Let's see, I think really, those are the main topics. I don't want to take up a ton of time, but I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
I have some questions. Anything of note with your meeting with county council or before county council, anything we should be aware of conversation-wise?
No, I thought Denise and I were there. We really just, you know, at that point, they were, as usual at that meeting, just determining whether we're staying below the growth quotient, which our budget expense will, and then talked a little bit about, you know, the operations and that. But very nice meeting, reiterated to them that we were moving ahead with a number of the projects that were on the bond issue request, and they felt happy that we were moving in that direction, so.
Got you. The 2.9 estimated property tax cap reduction, does that come straight from NIC?
Actually, it comes from the state.
Oh, comes from the state.
Yeah, state is doing it now, so. Yeah, so, and for 21, it's actually dropped to 2.7. So 2.9 is this year's.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So what's a, what's a good timeframe for you to provide us a list of options in terms of trying to reduce the amount of dollars that we spend in 2020, 2021?
2021, well, you know, my objective is to bring to the F and P meeting, the official budget plus the balanced internal budget, plus options for if revenues come in even more decrease, because right now, the co, or the lit numbers are based on 19 revenues. We know they're going to be worse in 2021 and 2022. So I'm going to bring a recommendation, some recommendations there to say anywhere up to a million dollars of lost revenue between income tax, interest earnings is another big hit, and then because the debt service will go off our books and it affects the lit distribution, that'll be more for 2022, but it's important to keep that in mind, that we'll need to be able to take care of those losses either through controllable expenses, you know, holding those back, or, you know.
Yeah, I think we need to, not just, the focus always seems to be on the revenue side. I understand that. We've been very lucky over the years. I think that is going to change and change dramatically. I think that this is a conservative estimate that the state has provided, and so we should be thinking ahead about actual net expense reduction options.
Yeah.
One of which, just to throw out there, just because of the timing, is I don't know what you plan to do with your group health, but I would think you would want to bid that again, like we have previously, and just look hard at that, you know, opportunity to save some money. And, you know, give us a list of options. That would be my request.
Yeah, I think any controllable expenses on the table. I mean, I'm planning on bidding out the property and casualty insurance also, you know, and putting that out. So anything that can be looked at, I think, needs to. It's, as you say, the growth quotient, the, you know, it gets mitigated over six years. It's a six-year moving average. That won't move a lot, but the key is how much can be collected. We know that we can raise a levy, but are we going to be able to collect it all? Income tax, that's a direct impact on the economy. Things like the caps, what will happen with market values? If those go down, we'll get hit worse.
Again, we're talking about revenue.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Most businesses are looking at the expense side these days, in these extremely difficult days. So I'm just going to say it as clearly as I can. I would hope that we would have a list of options, not at the end of the year, well prior to the end of the year, for the whole board to look at and then have a discussion about, you know, what do we, if anything, that we need to do.
Right, sure.
You know, that's just my request.
Yep, that'd be fine.
All right, are there any other questions for Dave? Okay, seeing none, I would like a motion for approval, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jim, second by Paul. Any further discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. All right, moving on to approval of claims.
Yeah, I'm actually going to send around two copy or two packets, the ones from today, the ones that were faxed out to you two weeks ago, those had the wrong cover sheet on it. And so if you can sign those, the numbers are correct, it was just the wrong cover sheet, so.
Is there anything in it, Dave, that's out of the ordinary or extraordinary, I guess?
No, no, this week, the one today had ESI. It was our purchase annual replacement of our PCs for 123,000. That was one of the larger checks, but the rest of it was all the normal items.
Standard, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion for approval of claims?
Still move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Gloria, second by Jim. Any discussions or clarification? Okay, moving on to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Before I go on to the next agenda item, I am remiss in my duties as president of the board to welcome Denise here to the table from that standpoint. Denise Davis is newly been named as the interim director here at the Allen County Public Library and for the system, so we're just appreciative that you were willing to serve in that capacity, and we thank you for stepping up during this time of transition. So thank you. All right, next item is circulation schedule for policy revision.
So generally, annually, we'll bring this back to you with edits. These are two documents, two policies that articulate our circulation schedule and the fines and fees that we apply to overdue materials. With the addition of circulating Wi-Fi hotspots, which we're hoping to do in the next few weeks, we reviewed this policy and identified a number of inconsistencies that we wanted to clarify, and they're outlined for you. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them. So in your packet, you have a redline version and a clean version of each.
Policies more in compliance with other libraries equal to our size or therewith, as far as the...
Staff look at what circulation policies are with other libraries, but we try and align with what our community desires. And then make sure that, within the material types, that we have them categorized in the correct groups. So for instance, we're increasing the equipment that we're now lending to the public, so we needed to clean that up because we had varying equipment circulation periods, and we wanted to get that in alignment, just for our customers.
So you take our community into consideration?
Yes, please.
I would move for approval of the revisions to, which one should I say? Is it resolution, where is the resolution number on this? I'm not finding it.
I don't think there's a resolution. It's just revision to our current schedule.
Okay, I'm confused with the other piece. So I would move for approval to the revisions to schedule the fines and fees and circulation schedule.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Paul and a second by Gloria. Is there any further discussion or clarification for Denise? All right, we'll move forward with the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to resolution number 2020-6.
This too is something that you see annually. This resolution allows us to enter into an agreement with the State of Indiana, the State Library of Indiana, so that we can benefit from E-rate discounts for our telecommunication costs each year, which are generally in the range of a 90% discount. For this document, because it requires signatures, those in the room, we will ask for your signatures, and those who are participating via Zoom, Sarah will email you this document, ask you to sign it, and scan it, and return it to her, so we can submit them together.
So who's the provider?
ENA.
They're an internet provider? I'm...
Yeah, why don't you have, come on up, Kim, and ask that question.
I'm just curious, I mean, 90% discount's great, but I'm just curious as to who's doing that.
Well, that 90% discount, that comes, that comes from federal funds. So we do the, well, in this case, the State Library does the paperwork. We get the discount as being part of the consortium.
So the federal government is covering 90% of the cost, or it's an actual 90% discount from retail that we're paying?
It's a federal program, federal funds.
Okay, so.
They're covering 90% of the cost.
Yep.
Okay.
Our bill is discounted.
And the service provider, the internet service provider that we use here at the library is who?
ENA.
ENA.
Education Networks of America, I believe, is what it stands for.
Never heard of them. I was just curious.
Yeah, and the discounts are based on poverty rates in the community, school lunch programs, and things like that. So federally, they look at, and it applies to schools as well. So they look at the poverty in various locations, and that discount is adjusted based on income of the households.
Okay, I don't want to waste too much time, but it's interesting, I'm just curious. You need, I would, I would move to approve resolution 2020-6.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Paul and a second from Jim. Are there any discussion, other discussion items or clarification on this? All right, moving forward to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, resolution carries. All right, Denise, report to the interim director.
Okay, so in your packet, you have a number of items which should look familiar to you. Greta had done in the past an update from managers, branch managers and department managers, and we continued that for that meeting, so that's in your packet. We also, in front of you, you have an update from the New Haven branch. That manager was on vacation when we were gathering this, so you have an insert that goes with it. You also have the strategic plan quarterly update for the year. The format's a little different. I took into consideration your feedback about wanting longitudinal data, so that has been included with the narrative. Also in your packet is the monthly reading progress report and the monthly stats, which there are a couple of formula concerns that I have, so we'll be revising that table, so next month, you'll have a corrected table. So those are the documents that are in your packet. What I wanted to mention, also in your packet, you have from Human Resources, the HR policy revisions, which we will bring to you for review and vote in September, but we wanted you to have them in advance because there are a lot of documents. So you don't have to act on that today, but we wanted you to have it well in advance to review. A couple of things I wanted to update you on. The summer learning program is going gangbusters, and it ends in just a few days. We extended it a full month this year. The grab and go kits are really, really, really popular, and you will see that over and over again in the branch managers' updates. The public really has enjoyed that. And I checked with Mara Honeywell this morning, and she told me we're over 8 million minutes read for summer reading. She also has an update in your, in that packet as well. I checked with Mike earlier today about the amnesty program. It's been in place for a week, and we've had about 2,700 items returned and about $10,000 in fines and fees waived for our community, and it's just the first week, so we're pretty excited about that.
Great.
Yeah, and heartfelt comments from people for waiving fees for them. For many people, it makes the difference of them being able to use the library and not, so this has been a really wonderful program to launch. I wanted to let you know, so we've been working for several months with an outside company to do tours. As we updated the website, one thing we wanted to do was increase the visibility of the buildings, and we hired a company, its name I'm not going to remember at the moment, to do a 3D tour of the main library, and that is now posted on the library website. And you can find it under, using the library, and then there's a tours link, a 3D tours link. So I encourage you to play with that. It's, if you have motion sickness, you might want to sit back when you look at that, because you can move very quickly through the building. And it's, the design is called a cake design, so you can actually stack spaces above one another, but we have individual videos for each of the spaces in this building. Finally, senior staff will be working on a couple of changes in how we communicate with staff. So the director had sent out a Friday update, and we are continuing that, but each of us is taking our turn, sending those messages to staff and focusing on things that are happening. So like, when it's financed update, we'll be sending that, because he'll be able to answer all those questions. One of the other things that we had talked about this week in our senior staff meeting was to also have time for Q and A for staff in a more informal way. So we're going to be leveraging Zoom for that. We're going to start it in September, so one Wednesday a month, in the morning for about a half hour, and in the afternoon for a half hour. We're just going to, we're going to have a topic that we're going to talk about, and then we'll take questions from staff. And Kurt is the first one out of the gate. He's going to update staff on the Roland Center, because we'll be a little bit further along by then, and staff have been really interested. So we're going to try that for a few months, see how that goes. If it, if staff adapt to that pretty well, we'll continue that into 2021. We also would like to get out and visit, but we'll do that if we can. I guess that's, those are my updates. So are there any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Sharon.
I guess this is either for the board, or I kind of looked over the HR policy changes, and I know we're going to talk about it in September. I guess I wasn't aware that we were looking at modifying the policy. Is this something new that's being changed, or has this been in the works?
Kendra, would you like to come up and speak to that?
So this is something that should be ongoing, looking at the handbook policies, reviewing, revising, and so it's been time, it's been part of my goal. So what we're doing is we're taking a section of the handbook at a time, making those adjustments, bringing them to the board for approval.
And then just for, while we're looking over Kendra, can you tell me where the direction or input or instructions and some of the changes are coming from?
We, our legal counsel has been very involved in the majority of those, and so a lot of the changes that you see are from legal counsel. Others are just verbiage, practice changes, making sure that what we're doing is consistent with what the handbook says.
Any further questions, Sharon?
No, but I do have some further concerns, but I'll talk offline about them.
Okay, yeah, I think that's the intention of staff, to make sure that we have enough time to review this, so I encourage all board members to actively dive into personnel policies here, and, because I think that is, from that standpoint, you know, I think one of the things is, there's always practices that change, but it's a question of, if practices have changed against policy, which one is right? Right? That's, in personnel policies especially, that always comes up, so I think we definitely need to take that into consideration as we look at them, and we can have more dialogue on that in the September board meeting. And to your point, Sharon, if there are clarification questions, I'm sure that Kendra is more than willing to speak to any board member one-on-one about why the changes were made. I'd encourage all board members to do that as well. Are there any other questions regarding, anything with that related to the HR policies? All right, I had a few, just by looking at it, and I know that you dive into all the data all the time. That's been your role as Director of Strategic Initiatives. Can you kind of give us, you know, your top level view on the strategic plan items that you've given us in that report? You know, what are some things that stood out to you, you know, in, in positive ways? And obviously, there's, there's maybe with some of the trend data, some things that we need to be working on, or some things along those lines. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, some of the things that were somewhat surprising to me, and I don't know that they, they should have been, but they were, the idea of online training for staff and moving away from a lot of in-person training, staff really adapted to that very well. So just, just the sheer volume of hours that staff have put in to continue their own personal growth, both as an employee and as a person, has been really surprising, and you can see this trending consistently. Even with the blips for like, the new automation system last year, where we had a very high spike in, in training for staff, the virtual training really stuck out. So just in the first two quarters of this year, if you look, it's the Niche Academy use per, by hours per FTE. Our average last year was 37 hours per FTE, and in one quarter, we had 33 hours, and in a second quarter, we had 50 hours. So we're going to far exceed that training number this year. And that's a combination of staff having time, because of COVID, to do the training, but they embrace that, and that's really important. So that, that was a big surprise to me, and it also reinforced for me that we have, we have quality training, we're continuing to build that, and the, the training coordinator is actually looking at that to expand that, so there's more breadth in, in the training that we're offering. Some things that have been interesting, just from a labor perspective, is even with reduction in staff availability for just maintaining buildings, we kept those numbers high, so there was still plenty of work for people to do during the closure, and I wasn't quite sure how those numbers were going to, were going to play out. But again, they're, they're holding solid throughout. The programming, another area where I was surprised at how quickly staff pivoted and how, how good they were at planning and getting the community involved was with our virtual programming. That was, that was a heavy lift for staff. There's nothing better than having children in a room with you while you're reading to them. It's very hard to engage children when you're not physically in front of them. And the fact that we had over 2,000 people attending some of our virtual storytimes is just incredible, and I think it's a tribute to the staff and how the community has engaged with the library. So we look forward to when we can have them back in. The governor just extended the mask order for another month, so we'll, we'll see about that, but right now, we're, staff are able to pivot pretty well between virtual and in-person. Summer learning is down, and that's not a surprise, but I was heartened that we have 8 million minutes read. So even, even in a time when the community may feel disengaged because of the lack of in-person programming, we're still able to provide those services, so. So that's, that's that. There's some areas that we're exploring that I'm not really sure how the numbers are going to, going to inform us. It's something that we have to continue to look at, and that's in focus area, community awareness and engagement, and it's media impressions. So we spend a lot of time, we, the Royal We, Stephanie and her team, spend a lot of time cultivating those relationships with the media and really curating how we communicate with them, and also being intentional in how we push information about programs and services through social media and through the formal media, and trying to understand the value of that investment, both in terms, because it takes a lot of time for staff to do that, because we, we just don't stand up in front of a camera and start talking. You know, they spend time kind of crafting the message and getting prepared for that, so that it looks as professional as possible, and that's an investment. So the question is, what do we, what do we get from that? And that's, that's the hard part, that I'm going to be spending time on understanding how do those things connect, and what's, what's the real value of that investment? And can, can it turn, does it turn into more circulation, more program attendance, and, and the things that we're marketing? and the things that we're marketing through those media? So that's how we're gonna be spending time. We, again, the Royal We, will be spending time trying to pull apart some of these other numbers that are really new numbers for us. You know, the outputs are easy, you know, how many visits, how much circulation, that sort of thing. But when you try and understand sort of the social impact of a media presence, that's harder to do.
I noticed, Denise, the creativity that came forth through this time period was astronomical. And as human beings, sometimes we don't realize that, that even under difficult times, there are some good things that come forth from it. You have more time to talk, to think, and to process, and to actually execute some of the thoughts that maybe you've had in the past and weren't able to have the time.
And I think too, staff who, I think perhaps were reticent to move into virtual programming, see that they can actually do it and they're good at it. You know, so it's a growth opportunity for staff, but also, you know, gives them an opportunity to be creative in a different way.
Thank you, there's a lot in here. So that was one of the things that I knew, I said, there has to be a few highlights that probably have been on the top of our mind, but... But as you review this, I mean, I'd encourage all board members to review it and, you know, bring other questions back in future meetings if you, you know, see a trend line that you're, you know, not sure why it is what it is. But we definitely appreciate having those trend lines so we can ask more questions, so. All right, are there any other questions for Denise and her director's, interim director's report? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Committee reports. Marty with the Capital Projects Committee.
Yeah, I can report to the board here. The Capital Projects Committee did meet on Monday. Again, the committee is myself as chair, Ben is on the committee, and Kent is on the committee. We meet it... We met on Monday with Denise, Kim Boland, and Dave. Really, the purpose was discuss the status, staff process, about making recommendations for capital projects. We discussed options. We discussed possible bonding options that are out there, and depending what we decide is necessary as a board moving forward. At this time, we're waiting for more information from staff. Denise is, I think, leading that with Kim, and Dave. We will expect to have more in the next two meetings.
All right, there's no business to bring forward at this time?
Any business to bring forward? I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Any other questions from board members regarding that committee? All right, we'll move on to the Director of Search Committee, and that would be Ben as chair of that.
Yes, thank you. The search committee solicited proposals from four search firms that specialize in the library space. We received four. The search committee consists of Jim, Paul, Kendra Staffson, and myself. And we reviewed all four and rank ordered them. And last night, we interviewed the one that all of us selected on paper to... As the first candidate. We were quite impressed with the firm. The firm is Bradbury Miller Associates with offices in Ohio and Missouri. They have been in business for 35 years, basically doing public sector libraries, although they do some institutional libraries and state libraries. They have familiarity with Indiana. They have done the Evansville Library, Indianapolis Library, I believe it's the State Library, and help me out, fellas or Kendra, I think it was Fisher's outside of Indianapolis recently. And in other words, they are familiar with our community, our state. Their process is quite exhaustive, and it was something that attracted us because of their attention to detail. The process after they formalize the recruitment strategy and the position will take, in a perfect world, about three to four months or so. And in light of COVID and all, they have actually... They just completed Winnetka search this morning, and they have done that virtually all through Zoom. But they are flexible based on our needs and the various candidates. They estimate, because our library is such a jewel in the crown of libraries, that the reaction to the posting will generate over 300 responses. Now, some of them may be responses that they think were the New York Public Library or the Museum of Natural History. Sometimes people don't read the announcements that well. But in any case, they'll winnow it down and come up with a group of 30, 35 that will be presented to the search committee, which will then help and the board, and will help winnow it down to three or four finalists that then will be interviewed initially face-to-face via Zoom, or depending on what happens as the world changes here. They will include in their profile input, of course, from the board, from staff, from various stakeholders, foundation if we wish, friends, donors. And also, for our patrons, will post a questionnaire on their website that can be answered and will be anonymous. It will not... It will go to them, not to any member of the library, staff, or board. So we're excited about them. Their... Three things are necessary. We're recommending pending positive reference checks, and I've already started on that. I had spoke with a search committee in Derry in Connecticut and have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with someone in Dallas, Texas. But pending positive reference checks and a contract reviewed by our attorney and the signature of that contract executed by our president, we would be ready to begin the search. So that's the recommendation of the search committee that the firm of Bradbury Miller and Associates be hired to do the search for our executive director.
All right, that recommendation comes from the committee. Are there any other questions or discussion items for the committee members? Okay.
I would only indicate, and I don't wanna speak for Jim, but I think Ben summarized it very well. It was a really impressive interview last evening.
Okay, great. All right, with that recommendation from committee, there's... A second is not needed. We'll move on to vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries to move forward with that firm. Thank you all on the committee for your work that has already happened and will happen in the future. We know that this is quite a laborious process when you're on a search committee, especially for such an important position. So thank you for the time that you're giving to this process. All right, we'll move on to other business.
Kent, I have a motion I'd like to make in light of the interim director's position. It's my understanding there will be some documents that will need to be signed by the director, or in this case, the interim director and/or you as president. So I would like to formalize that in the form of a motion that as appropriate, the interim director and/or the president be empowered to sign documents committing the library to such goods and services that are represented in that contract.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Ben and a second from Paul. Any further discussion or clarifications on that item? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, at this time, we've reached the opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody in the room that would like to come forward for public comment? All right, seeing no one present for public comment, we will move to adjournment. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Jim and second by Paul. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Thank you all for attending today.